Council for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Do we have anything to report out?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. The Clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And if the Grand Marshal of the Veterans Day Parade, Mr. McTiernan, would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be awesome. Thank you, Miles. Do you have any agenda update?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is a revised resolution for Item 6 on the consent calendar. A copy has been previously provided to you and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay. And I do not see any blue cards here. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda? If you would like to do so, there are blue cards on the back table. Feel free to grab one and run up to our... Please, Officer will pass it along to us. Not seeing anyone racing to the table or up front. We will move on to scheduled presentations.
Your first scheduled presentation item this evening is a resolution of commendation honoring veterans and veteran organizations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Lorraine Pejoni, your Parks and Rec Director. Tonight, we are pleased to be part of a very heartwarming and well-deserved honoring of the veterans and all the veterans organizations in our community. I'd really like to thank the many members that came together to plan this year's parade, which you'll hear a little bit more about. I'd also like to thank Commander Nimi from the VFW Post 6604 and the city staff liaison Ted Ocampo, who's here tonight as well. I'd also like to thank our Parks and Rec social media team. You'll see a few videos tonight and I think it does a really great justice to not only our Grand Marshal, but a really neat perspective on our vets, both our veterans and then also our enlisted personnel who were part of this video. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ted Ocampo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and residents. This Friday is Veterans Day and with that, our annual Wayne Spence Folsom Veterans Day Parade will occur. Tonight, we'd like to honor our veterans with two videos and also a proclamation. Our first video highlights our this year's Grand Marshal, Miles McTiernan. Miles, would you join me up here?
I'm going to hit you with my idiot.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present this year's Grand Marshal, Lieutenant Colonel Miles McTiernan. And we're going to play a video about Miles.
Autographs later.
It's going, it's okay. It's okay, I got it, Ted.
Miles James McTiernan, Lieutenant Colonel, United States Air Force, retired. The lottery came out. My number was... As a matter of fact, the lottery came out while I was at Officers Training School in Lackland Air Force Base in 1969. And the rest is kind of history. I went in, they told me I had to be a pilot or navigator. My eyes were not that good, so I had to be a navigator. I do have one hell of a war story and that's... And that's what my dubious distinction is. I was the last person to go out of a B-52 in the Vietnam conflict. And you say bailout? Yes, bailout because my ejection seat didn't work and I had to jump on a hole and ended up in the water. And through luck, no help of my own, they found me and picked me up and I made it back here. I was in Vietnam from... I didn't get over till '72. So I was there '72, '73, and '74. So I had over 120 and a half missions. It was pretty hairy during Easter of '72. And then we went to do the 11-Day War, which is known as the Two-Week War at the end of December of 1972. As we flew into Illinois on day nine of the 11-Day War, I was downstairs and I had no windows, nothing but a five-inch scope. And I could see the electronic signals coming in, but I couldn't see anything else. So I counted the missiles fired at us and I stopped at 75. Two missions later, after the war was over, after they had gone, not gone to the peace table, we went up for a show of force. And on that particular mission, we were dropping the bombs and the missile exploded off the nose. Luckily, we flew for 40 minutes after we got hit. The pilot put on the red light to say bailout and trying to do what I could. I did, except my seat decided not to eject. So everybody left the aircraft. So I was there by myself. So it was a hell of a day. I'm really lucky to be here. I'm lucky about all the services that joined in. I mean, I was trapped by the Forward Air Controller from the US Army and then I got picked up by, I say, a Marine helicopter ship. They took me in and I finally ended up with a... In the Da Nang Army Hospital with my face all patched up. I'd like to use it as a jumping off to let all the veterans know. The government has passed a new act. It's called the PAC Act, P-A-C-K. And it's an opportunity for the people that didn't get the opportunity to air your grievances on things like toxics and all this kind of stuff. So it's kind of an open year of refiling to get into, get some disability. My wounds, so to speak, are invisible, but there are days when I have bad days and there are days when I have good days, like today. But it's something you've got to look at and take advantage of your folks. And I have a website. I built a website on TogetherWeServe and that is an interesting site in that you can put a bio of your particular personal history. And for example, I have all my patches, my airplanes and some of my assignments and things of that nature and pictures. So it's really a good legacy for the kids, grandkids, things of that nature. Thank you, Miles.
Congratulations.
Gentlemen. Ladies. We all do it together.
Yes, sir.
I'm more for the men.
Thank you, sir. Carrie, stay up here because at this time, we would like to ask our mayor to present a proclamation to our veterans.
Okay.
And accepting on behalf of the veterans is Tis Levinson from the Commander of Folsom American Legion.
Okay, this is a resolution of commendation honoring veterans and veteran organizations. Whereas America's military personnel are vital to the security and prosperity of our nation, we have a responsibility to protect and serve those who have made countless sacrifices for our country. Whereas throughout our nation's history, our military personnel have boldly answered the call of duty to defend our nation's independence and precious liberties, risking life and limb for their fellow Americans. And whereas those who serve our country exemplify the courage and resolve that define our national character, enriching the communities they call home. And whereas our obligation to our military personnel does not end after their time in the uniform. And whereas we recognize the veterans organizations that actively support military personnel, including the Folsom Veterans Hall, American Legion Post 362, Blue Star Moms Rolling Hills, Marine Corps League Post 940, Military Order of the Devil Dogs, pound 71, Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 385, Military Order of the Purple Heart Auxiliary, Submarine Veterans, Gold Country Base, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post 6604, and VFW Auxiliary, Post 6604. And whereas each warrior who fights for our nation has earned our eternal gratitude, we ask that all Americans thank and support them. Together, we remain committed to fostering a national community of support for these brave heroes. Now, therefore, I, Carrie M. Howell, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, hereby thank and support veterans for their contributions to our nation and to hereby also thank and support the veterans organizations for their dedication to supporting our military personnel. Reclaim this 8th day of November, 2022. Thank you. Do you want to say a couple words?
Yes, please.
With the mayor? Are you going to get here?
Yeah, that'd be great. Hey, guys.
Hi, Miles. Right up here, Miles. They can see me over the top of you, trust me. I love this guy.
I do, too. They can see me over the top of him, too.
Whiskey.
Whiskey.
All right, well, so we'd like to conclude with a second video entitled Meet the Vets: Generations Filling Honorors. So we'll play that real quick.
All right, good morning, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Good morning. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Curtis Goller. I've been in the Army for a total of 29 years. Actually, I have two different clocks running. I have 20 years of active federal service and another nine years of part-time M-Day National Guard time. I'm a retired Lieutenant Colonel, US Army, and I served on active duty back in the early '70s as the Vietnam War was winding down. Then I got out of the military in 1971 and joined the reserves. You know, I think one thing that I noticed different between my time during the Vietnam War and our later conflicts the countries engaged in is the support of the populace. At the airport escorting the body of this fallen trooper, people would walk around you. You'd be in your uniform and they would just part.
I think the, you know, citizens all realized how, you know, wrong that was and we were kind of, I think, in some ways, the beneficiaries when we got back from Desert Storm because, you know, when we got off the bus and off the plane and onto the bus, the streets were lined with people waving flags and there was parades. It was really, really amazing.
That's, again, the beauty of our parade here in Folsom, which will be held this year on November 11th, as usual. And you get to see a lot of the citizenry out. The streets are, you know, crowded with people and that's not done everywhere. This is one of the biggest parades in the region here in Folsom.
My wife Laura and I went last year to the parade. It was really, it was pretty awesome. And it was, it was... You see the community support and you see just how deep all the military service runs in, you know, in the city of Folsom.
Morning.
Morning. Jay Wiley. Marine Corps for nine years. Served in Korea with the First Provision Brigade.
And I'm Nicholas Sarah. Active duty in the United States Navy. Been active duty for 10 years now.
Are you a SEAL?
No, 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 no. No, not on that calendar. I'm a hospital corpsman, so we get a lot of playtime with Marines.
The doc was the favorite person, anyway, in all of the units. And I personally have two or three corpsman buddies and they're doctors.
Yeah, we kind of have a parallel. I mean, my service pales, you know, compared to your experience, but location-wise at least. Because then from there, I then went to Okinawa.
Yeah, I never made Okinawa. I did Japan twice.
How was the, I guess, the feedback from the locals there with Marines?
Well, when I first went, they were still under occupation from World War II. They hadn't raised the occupation. So we had a lot of unlimited places, but mostly everything was off limits. And then during the Korean War, they actually, that war helped build Japan back because they scarred the Pacific and brought all of a lot of tanks and trucks and stuff into Japan. They stripped them down to totally rebuild them.
Yeah, I spent some time in, out in Iwakuni. Supportive, wonderful people that, you know, they wanted you to be there. There was a sense of pride for their own country, but then a welcoming, you know, warm feeling from the Japanese people.
Well, it makes me feel proud that the people show up at this parade like the way they do, yes.
It's a, for me, it's a pause. It's a much-needed pause on an annual basis to stop and recognize those who've served and those who are veterans to the United States, you know, military service and just appreciate contributions to the country. And not only to the country within, on a micro sense, it's a recognition and appreciation for service members who served their brothers, sisters in arms. So, yeah, it does mean a lot.
Yep. I look forward to it every year.
So where are you from?
I'm originally from Sacramento. I'm stationed at Travis right now, which was good for me because when I joined the military, I just wanted to get a job. I wasn't trying to, like, travel a whole lot. So I've only been, for a home station, only been at McCord, which is at Washington, and then Travis.
Yeah, a lot different for me. During the time I came on active duty, it was called the Cold War. So we had a draft in force at the time. So I joined the Air Force ROTC, Utah State, and I wanted to fly rather than be drafted if I could. But the Air Force today is a lot different because your training is not all military-oriented.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we had to do ancillary training all the time. That's like physical fitness. I'd take a physical fitness test all the time. And depending on your age, we had what we called the 5BX. And the 5BX was like a Canadian physical fitness test. So you had to run a mile and a half in, you know, 11 minutes or 12 minutes, whatever it was, depending on your age. You had to do 32 push-ups and 32 sit-ups. Do all that in 10 minutes.
Oh, all within 10 minutes? Oh, okay.
So the first time, I decided to run first and then I was kind of weak on sit-ups and all that stuff, so I did the running last and that worked out better.
Yeah, we do similar because we do push-ups, sit-ups first and they're due to the mile-and-a-half run. But now they introduce new elements. So you could do, like, a plank. You could do... I'm not too familiar with it. I think you could do pull-ups. And then the run, they have this thing they call the hammer run. It's kind of like doing sprints across the court and you have to beep. The beep, there's a beep you have to beep. I haven't tried that one yet because I usually just do... I stick to the mile-and-a-half run and the push-ups, sit-ups is pretty easy.
For sure, yeah. They gave us a time limit and if you didn't make it, they also had a weight restriction.
Yeah, they had, they had waist, but they just got rid of the waist measurement. So they haven't been doing waist measurement, I think, in a year or two. I think post-COVID, they haven't been doing waist measurements.
Yeah, it makes the standards a little easier for people to get in because the retention rating and also the signup, you know, people wanting to join.
Yeah, I remember, like, joining, like, yeah, you have to have your height and weight has to match a certain criteria.
Yeah, so your original assessment, you have to be pretty well, have some tighter standards.
Yeah, you got to be in a lot better shape, yeah.
That's what we're talking about here today is, you know, veterans. What are we, what do we do? And how do we celebrate the Veterans Day, you know?
Yeah, so I think a lot of the people who I suppose I work, they, you know, they might every once in a while take a step back and just like, oh, man, just realize what you're doing, you know, what you're part of.
Yeah, for sure. I think, you know, the patriotic theme in America has gone away more than it should have.
Definitely.
I don't know what the reasoning may be and because the, I don't know. I think patriotism is important because, especially if you're in the military because, you know, that's the main reason we're here. Because a lot of people fought and died for their country.
Yeah, 100%.
And that's what we do. And so the military is a big part of the patriot theme in America.
Yeah, it is good that they have Veterans Day to recognize people. Maybe people realize again, like, oh, there is still people that appreciate what we do and they're thankful for what we do. Recognize some of the sacrifices that veterans make.
Thank you for giving us your time and don't forget about the parade. 9 o'clock Friday, we'll see you at the parade. Thank you.
And that moves us on to schedule presentation number two.
Your second item this evening is the presentation of the Folsom Tourism Business Improvement District Annual Report by the Folsom Tourism Bureau.
Bye, guys, thank you. See you Friday.
Good evening, Mayor's member of the council, Joe Galliardi, President and CEO of Choose Folsom Now! Visit, Connect, and Prosper. First of all, I want to thank those that have served for on cameras tonight, those that have served this great country. We are very blessed and fortunate and we're really fortunate to have such a great veterans parade where we get to celebrate that. So thank you to all those that have put in the effort to make that such a success. We're the largest in the region and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to thank all of them. Tonight, we're here to talk about what's going on in tourism in Folsom. I'm pleased to introduce Sally Buchanan. Sally, many of you know from having served on commissions, worked at the college. And many of you may not know, Sally used to work for us previously. So we were blessed to have Sally come back and join us. She's going to share with you a little bit about what we've done over the past year and what's coming up going forward. But I'm pleased to say that all projections right now for the rest of this year, if all goes as planned, it looks like we might be back up to pre-pandemic levels relative to, in your interest, TOT. In our interest, it would be the Business Improvement District. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Sally Buchanan to present our overview. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe, and good evening, Mayor Howell, councilmembers, staff, and guests tonight. And I'm humbled to go after that lovely presentation and am looking forward to the parade on Friday. As Joe said, new brand, Choose Folsom. Visit, Connect, and Prosper, our economic development corporation, tourism and the chamber, all under one brand. And fresh off the press is our new Visit Folsom logo. It is a cousin to Choose Folsom, same fonts and in the same family. However, a more tourism-centric feel to it. So you will be seeing that on the Visit Folsom website and all of our visitor-oriented collateral. Very excited about that new logo. So I think I know most of you up on the dais. I, again, Joe said I would, served for him back in, I think it's 2008. We keep trying to, I need to go back and actually look at that. But Mary Ann left at the beginning of the year, end of last year, and I was lucky enough to be offered the position. And I can say that if I had been offered something similar or even a full-time job back then, I would have said, heck, yes, because I absolutely love Folsom. Born and raised in Sacramento, moved to Folsom in 2008-ish and I think this is one of the most amazing places on earth. So somehow the stars aligned and about 15 years later, here I am and I am extremely happy to be here. I did start in, at the end of March of this year, so I wasn't present for the entire year, but I've always followed what, all the great things that have been happening in Folsom. Served on the Arts and Culture Commission and worked at the college for many years.
It was always hard to tell where you were because you're already at everything and you have been all along, so.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. So some highlights for the past year. If we remember, coming out of the previous fiscal year into July of 2022, we had our first rodeo after COVID and were able, they were able to scramble and get that back up and going. So what did tourism do? We, you know, we had to figure out this past year what the new normal was. The year prior to that, our bid revenues were half and we really came back to how do we support the events and the ways that we were supposed to be doing things with COVID regulations and whatnot. But we really stuck to our tried and true and just continue to support our travelers with concierge service, our special events and special meetings. I think one of the things that, you know, Mary Ann and the team led the charge on over the years was really providing anyone who travels to Folsom with concierge service, be it a leisure travel or one of our events or a small group or meeting. We greet them, we offer, sit down and listen to them and help them get done what they want to do when they are here. We support a lot of groups and events. One such event that I'm going to give a shout out to was this past weekend, I was able to greet 440 runners at 5:00 in the morning on Saturday with Councilmember Kozlowski for the Rio de Lago 100-Mile Endurance Run.
Thank you, Mike, for doing that because I was going on Sunday and it was really cold.
Carrie got the 9:00 AM shift.
I was going, I was going no matter what.
The amazing thing is 440 runners from literally all over the world. They came from Japan and Singapore and other places all over the United States. And I got a chance to snap a picture of a father, his kids escorting him in at the last minute right before the end of the race and they were probably five, and he was a Folsom father. And it just was the cutest thing. And the next day, Mayor Howell joined us and that race lasts 30 hours. The winning male and female runners finished in just over 16 hours. But they get 30 hours to finish. Many of them bring an entourage. So there were people staying. Carrie said many of them came into her restaurant. So what a huge economic impact. And for those groups, we help support with financial support if they need it. We connect them to services. We welcome their guests, we deliver welcome packets, just really helping them navigate and get what they need to be successful. And generally, when someone's been here for a group or an event, they want to come back because they see all the great things that we were doing. Last year, during the pandemic, they worked last year on a patio dining list because everybody, all the restaurants were doing it, but everybody wanted to know where they could find outdoor dining. So that was one of the projects that they did during the first part of the year. And also wildfire support. We had many people from wildfires staying in our hotels, the two major ones for the past two years. And Choose Folsom and Visit Folsom greeted those guests at the hotels, had pizza parties, gave them gift cards, found them services and anything that they needed to feel welcome and comfortable as they were displaced from their homes.
There was a lot of firefighters that were in the area at the same time because, again, I saw a lot of them.
A lot of firefighters, a lot of cleanup crews even still are at the hotels. So while we don't ever want something like that to happen, we always provide that Folsom style of service and welcome. Choose Folsom Signature Events, Folsom Pro Rodeo. This past year was completely sold out. It was amazing, all three days. Wine, Foothill Wine Competition. The Folsom, the Her Women's Conference, which is coming up a week from Thursday on the 17th at the Paladio. Over 400 women will be there. It is just set to be a fabulous event. Joint City Campaign, we did. We support Folsom, Put Your Money Where Your Heart Is. So that was a very... So that was a very special project of this past year. So looking into 2223, and we are in the midst of 2223, what's going on? Several of you were able to attend some of our Visit Folsom focus groups. There's a new normal in tourism and it's not just here in Folsom. Corporate travel is down and it's different and it's coming back, but I don't think it'll ever come back the way it was. Our hotels used to be sold out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights. We're close to it and that's kind of, it's flipped. It's now the weekends are more full and they have more availability during the week. And so we took, we took the time to take a step back and we're doing a strategic plan and analysis of tourism amenities and that should, that report should be done by December 14th and will be presented to our TED Core Board and we can share it with those who would like to see it. But some of the things that we're doing along with that is next week, no, Thanksgiving week, we're going to be putting up a new online booking engine on our website where anyone who's on visitfolsom.com can write their, see rates real time at all of our eight hotels and book a hotel. And we also will be able to package in added value amenities, maybe zoo and aquatic center tickets or rodeo tickets, gift cards to restaurants. So different things to really activate our website. We are getting ready to contract with a service that many of our partners, my partner up in El Dorado County and Economic Development and Tourism use, City of Sacramento, many of my counterparts in destination organizations are using Zartico. And it's a new way of looking at data and it's big brother. It can tell you where people are going, how much they're spending. You can look at if there's, what patterns, how long it takes people to get to the rodeo, what routes they're going, and if there's a, if you can see one route is really too much traffic, you can start to see patterns like that and figure out how to mitigate those kind of tourism-related issues that you would rather not happen. We have just announced our Bandwango Foothill Wine Pass. We partner with 60 foothill wineries for the wine competition and right now 37 of them are on our Foothill Wine Pass. And you can purchase a pass online and choose a one, three, 90-day or a year-long pass. And there's no app to download. It's delivered to your phone and you just show it to the wineries. It's very simple to use and we're getting ready to start a campaign on that. It helps our foothill wine partners who, many of them are struggling too after the pandemic and some of the weather-related issues. And that will also be able to, when you're booking your hotel room, you'll be able to add that into your basket and purchase that at the same time. And we will be rolling out other paid and non-paid passes through Bandwango. Think of a Folsom selfie trail or some other cities have done taco trails or all sorts of fun, fun things. We are, we are part of the 50 Economic Alliance, which is a group featuring Rancho, our friends to the west, Rancho Cordova, to the east, El Dorado County, Placerville, City of Folsom, City of Rancho Cordova, our tourism counterparts, the Chamber counterparts, and we're all working together. And we have a new website, 50ea.com. And it's all about telling people, depending on the people, it could be tourism efforts or our economic development issues, why the corridor is such a great place to come, stay, land your business, buy your home. And it's really great working with the team. We've got, we've got a lot of momentum going and, you know, whether someone lends their company here and moves into El Dorado Hills or moves into Rancho Cordova, and it doesn't matter where they land in the corridor, they're going to be spending time, money and in our area. So we really appreciate that effort and it's going.
And I think it's important just to highlight that because that doesn't happen everywhere. You did not mention the City of Sacramento necessarily, which is not to say anything bad about the City of Sacramento, but Rancho, El Dorado County, Folsom have always, because of the personnel that work for those agencies, many of them have worked for one of the other agencies and they're all personal friends. So that competition doesn't really exist because we realize that a rising tide raises all the boats, so.
Absolutely.
So they really do work really well together.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. And absolutely, Joe always says, business has no boundaries and it really doesn't. And neither does tourism because people generally don't know when they're crossing a city or a county line. And what we have in our communities together really is everything. You wouldn't have to leave the corridor if you didn't want to. I'm sure many of you have met Laura Fickell, who used to work for the City of Rancho Cordova. She's now working with us part-time in economic development. She's great to have on the team. She's got a tourism and economic development background and it's great to have her on board. And we are right now in the middle of updating our, the visitor center. We should be debuting at least one portion after the first of the year as right now we're painting and doing some flooring. So really focusing on local makers and a general store type of concept, of course, giving concierge service and serving as a visitor center, but really kicking it up a notch with a more experiential aspect of turning it into a general store. Okay, I went way too far. Okay, continued initiatives. These have been going on for some time, but we continue to leverage all of our marketing efforts across our Choose Folsom organizations and brands and working really closely with the city and the historic district and any other partners on, you know, cohesive branding and cohesive messaging where possible. We've been working on and still will continue to acquire new digital assets and utilize existing content. We have a ton of video from over the years. We finally have a new system that's cataloged that all and you can type in keywords and it can find what you need. So it's easier to put together a video. So that's something very cool that's going on. Continuing to focus on events that will bring new business to the area, put heads in beds. To say, last Memorial Day, we had the California Community College Baseball Championships, nearly 500 rooms over Memorial Day weekend. It was super fun to watch. The teams were great and that was held at Folsom Lake College. We're hoping to hear if we get a Spartan Race. That would be next March, 8,500 participants south of White Rock Road. And they come from all over the United States and some come from all over the world. So that will be exciting and I hope to be able to announce that.
Sally, what is the Spartan Race?
Spartan Race is similar to a Tough Mudder. It has 10 miles in further obstacles, running. If you don't do an obstacle, you have to do 20 burpees. And some do it in teams, some do it just for themselves. There's a kids' version. That's what I'll be doing. But it's a sport that people really travel and some people really make a circuit of it and do it all over the United States. And that's part of their fun and they bring their family along. And then, so if we do get Spartan, they will likely bring in Tough Mudder, which is a similar type of race, but we'll book in doing one in the spring and one in the fall, which would be fabulous. So we, I would not be doing that, just like, like I would not be doing the 100 mile endurance.
Joe knows this, but one of my sisters is kind of crazy and she's done it.
She's done, oh.
It's Kathy.
We'll let her know as soon as we.
You can start with the 32 push-ups, 32 sit-ups and mile and a half in 112 minutes.
Sally, quick one. The baseball and the race are the brand new addition?
Baseball was a new addition this past year. They are also here this year coming up. And then I think they're going to go back and forth between Southern California, but I'm also trying to get softball in the alternate years. So working with Folsom Lake College to see if we can get one every other year. So we'll have softball and then baseball. And the Spartan Race would be new. Actually, that used to be held at a ranch further out in Rancho Murrieta and that ranch couldn't hold them any longer. So they've been working with us and they're really excited to come here. It's been a process in working with them because they need 400 acres of pretty much empty space. So.
So are you working with Wilson Ranch and maybe the area that is, that is the future corp yard? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
New and improved services. I was talking about the visitor center and general store. We're going to kick up our merchandise another notch. We already have some Johnny Cash merchandise from when the trail was launched that we'll be putting on sale in the visitor center. We're actually working with the Johnny Cash Museum so we can buy some merchandise and sell it. Folsom Prison, Visit Folsom logo will, but most importantly showcasing our local and foothill makers. We're, Folsom is part of the gold country. So of course, we'd always want to showcase Folsom makers, but we will reach that into the gold country. And, you know, it can be painting, it could be food, it could be, there are many types of maker jewelry, many types of makers these days. So that's exciting. Getting a digital information kiosk, we will have one in the center. We hope to get those to go citywide and at the hotels, but we really found that when talking to the hotels, they prefer us to do it. A test and hopefully grab and go food and beverage, that we're kind of working through the details on that as we speak, but super excited at that project. We continue to work on our social media efforts with Facebook and Instagram and we have a beautiful, beautiful content. You can't, you can't beat that. And that's most of the time what drives people in is what they're seeing. I have, we have a hotel advisory committee that we meet with months, once a month. And we just had our first bus tour back and we actually started and ended at the zoo and we had lunch in the zoo and it was, we pretty much had it all to ourselves because it was all on a Wednesday. And it's designed for new hoteliers or the GMs and sales managers to get an update on what's going on. So we drive around, talk about different restaurants and economic development projects. We got the chance to tour south of 50 and they really appreciated that. With our strategic planning, we just did a targeted survey to people who've traveled to Folsom. So interesting in seeing what the results of that are. Those will be coming out with a strategic plan. And with that, that ends my report. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Sally?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Sally. So I just want to make sure I have this clear in my head. So all those things that you're talking about, that's funded when somebody stays at a hotel in Folsom, 4% is added to the bill. Is that correct? And so when, it's called a Business Improvement District, but in this case, the district is really citywide because it's the entire, every hotel, right?
It's industry. The industry defines the boundary.
Okay. And then in addition to that, when you stay at a hotel, there's, is it 8%? The TOT. And that funds something different. Thank you, Joe.
So the 8% is the transient occupancy tax that flows through to the city, to the general fund. The 4% Business Improvement District is an assessment, not a tax. And it can, the difference is that a tax is not usually rescinded. A Business Improvement District can be rescinded by the stakeholders, which are the hoteliers. So if the hoteliers decide that they do not want to continue with that, they're not happy with the job we're doing, they can rescind that. So that's the difference. It's not to a vote of the people. What is the vote of text, Prop something, some Prop 219 or some proposition?
218.
218. You have to go to a vote of the people where an assessment is by the businesses.
Got it.
A Tourism Business Improvement District is defined, geographically, you can define the boundary however you want, but it's industry-specific. Sutter Street has a property-based Business Improvement District, which again is an assessment, but it's assessed on the property. They have to agree to it, but they are beholding to the owners of those properties in order to continue with the business, the property-based Business Improvement District. But ours is an industry business, which is hoteliers. And it's defined as any hotel that has more than 19 rooms. And the reason that was done when we originally did this was the Folsom Motel and Mini Storage had 18 rooms. And so we wanted to make sure that we provided the benefit to those that received the benefit.
Got it. Thank you very much.
That was the old Folsom Lodge, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, it's just a statement, Joe. So all this money we are seeing here in 2021, 22, it's almost 1.25 millions and now 1.3 million. So you are accountable for the hotel industry. That's right? Okay. Just want to clarify that one. It is, even though city is receiving it, we are passed through to Tourism Bureau. Thank you. Nope, I don't have anything. I think you answered some of my questions, the new ones, what's coming up, you know, how to attract, you know, extra dollar to Folsom through the sales tax and of course, you know, prospering our small businesses especially. Thank you.
I just want to make sure you understand that Sally was touching on it, that we're investing in software and things that will be able to give you better information on where people are going, why they're going there and how they're going. And so that when we report back to you, you'll be able to, we'll be able to share that with you.
Right. I saw that one, the second bullet. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar.
I want to pull number 11.
And I'd like to pull number five or ask some questions about it before we take it up.
So I'll move items.
And I'm going to pull eight.
Eight, okay. So I will move items three through 10 with the exception of five and eight.
Five, eight and 11.
And 11, right?
Pulling 11.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second call. The role, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Howell.
So on number five, resolution, what is it, 10942, it was unclear to me from the staff report whether they are doing new aerial photography in order to do water use budget analysis or if they're using existing imagery or something else.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director, Councilmember Kozlowski. The existing aerial imagery from 2018 that is provided by the state to all water agencies will be used as part of this initial analysis. There are options at a later date when the state does decide to do another flyover for aerial imagery where if that occurs during the time of this contract, we would be able to import that imagery into the work they do. What they can also do is look at Google Earth data and try to digitize some of that information to pull in new development that's occurred since, you know, whenever that flyover date was in 2018, which for the city would capture, you know, a good portion of the area south of Highway 50.
And is this something that we have done before and this is a new pass at this analysis? Or this is the first time?
In my time here, I'm not aware of any outdoor landscaping on the residential sector that we have done. I know in the past, our Water Conservation Coordinator has worked with the Regional Water Authority for non-residential parcels and I believe they might have been focused on parks if I'm not mistaken. And this was probably six, seven years ago.
So, so is the, is the objective here to catalog how much landscaping is on each lot or to make a catalog of the totality of the landscaping and what's excluded from the calculation? The house and the driveway and the streets and any rocks that you have in your yard? I mean, how granular are they intending to get?
Yeah. So the, the information would be twofold. At the statewide level, the state is going to take their imagery and develop a, an outdoor residential water use target that is essentially going to say, City of Folsom, you get. that is essentially going to say, city of Folsom, you get, say, 8,000 acre feet to use in an efficient manner in totality for all of your outdoor landscaping in the residential sector. And they have three bins essentially in which they calculate the area of your property. One is non-irrigated, which would account for hardscape, the lay of the house itself, you know, driveway, et cetera. They have irrigable, which is your grass plants, shrubs. And then irrigable, non-irrigated, which is like dirt or maybe it's an area of bark that you have down. And so you get a certain amount, an agency would get a certain amount per year for those three bins. Essentially zero, obviously for the, the hardscape and, and the house pad or the house itself. What we are going to do is, what we're intending to do is because it doesn't help us if we're trying to get to certain customers that may be over an allotted budget per se to help identify where inefficiency is occurring. So what this will allow us to do is identify, if we want to run a report and say, okay, if you are 10% over your allotted budget for a month or a year, we can then do direct outreach to those customers and try to identify why that is. Maybe it's the irrigation system that they have, maybe it's the controller that they have. Because ultimately each year, starting in reporting period of 2024, we are going to have to aggregate the amount of water used indoors and outdoors and through water loss and report that back to the state. And as we know, outdoor water use tends to be the biggest portion of water used in, you know, in water agencies or in water districts. And so this will then allow us to focus on the outdoor portion of our residential sector and then be able to work with our customers if we're able to identify, okay, parcel X, you're 10% over, 20% over. We can run different reports that would then help us work directly with our customer base. Because we will ultimately be required to report to the state and compare actual usage versus what the state identified as each one of our water use targets, indoor, outdoor, and indoor, outdoor water loss, and then the non-residential sector.
Wow. Not for nothing, but this seems like an opportunity for the state to bludgeon us for doing the right thing in the past. Because if, if you're taking and cataloging the non-irrigated, irrigable, whatever the other categories are, and then you're developing a budget based on that, if we had been really economical with how we landscaped all of our property in Folsom and the budget starts from that point, that, that seems absolutely like an opportunity to have unfair goals set up from community to community. So I'm not saying that will happen, but it just, you know, and then.
Oh, it definitely looks like it to me.
Yeah, and then, I don't know, this feels like, this feels like an unfunded mandate that's going to go out of control because this, this little budget right here is, you know, $45,000 a year, which we could spend on something else in order to give the state a reason to hit us over the head. So this is not directed at you, Marcus. I know you're just doing what we have been mandated to do, but I am so fed up with unfunded mandates from the state, especially ones where they're basically asking us to eventually punish ourselves. So there you go, I've soapboxed on this one enough.
Not just, not just ourselves, but our residents. And, you know, this is going to be horrible for, you know, for Don Smith and his crew. They're basically going to be code enforcement for water related issues.
Yeah, I know, I know that we have, you know, persistent drought issues in California and we need to be sensitive to water conservation. I, I get all of that, but this feels like it's going to be a snowball of, of responsibility that's going to be really painful and distasteful to the people that live here in Folsom.
And without doing a poll, I would imagine there are many other water agencies, boards, councils, supervisors that would, would agree with everything you said.
So, so now my, my question I've asked on many other occasions, what is the penalty for non-compliance right now? If we don't do this, what is the, what does it cost us?
If we don't do these items that are listed in the staff reports today, there is no penalty. Starting in 2024, when we do have to start reporting, I believe 2028 is, and I'll have to go back to the dates. It's either 27 or 28 when everything kicks in and you could then be penalized as, as an agency. I don't know the dollar amount, I can't recall if it was a thousand dollars a day or $10,000 a day.
That's penalties for not complying with the state mandated conservation goals.
That would be.
Not for not having done this.
Correct, for, if we don't do this, there would be nothing that would happen to us. The state doesn't dictate that we as a, a city would have to enter in any sort of programming or opportunity to connect with our residents or their water use.
So what advantage do we gain by doing this?
The advantage we gain is, let's just say in 2028.
I'm asking you to be completely selfish for Folsom. Yeah, okay.
You know, so the, the advantage for us is if, let's say in 2028, our first reporting year, right? The state identifies you get 10,000 acre feet of water for outdoor water use. We run our numbers and we find that our outdoor water use is 11,000 acre feet. So we are technically out of compliance. I don't think in that year, we would actually receive a violation that says, here's a $10,000 fine for 365 days a year. Most likely, they'll start a, a little softer and ask you, what programs do you have? What are you doing? How are you working with your customers? What programs do you offer your customers? What this will allow us to do is if we have at that time, say, 19,000 single family residences, you know, where will we know to start to identify, okay, where is maybe inefficient use of water occurring? This will actually help us narrow down where that could be occurring, which then eases somewhat the load of Don and his team because now we're not having to go to 19 or 20,000 single family residences to discuss this with them. We can focus on those that are maybe 10, 15, 20%, whatever percentage we identify to run the report to see who may be using water inefficiently outdoors.
And chances are that's going to be north of the freeway just because of, you know, changes to construction standards. But my concern, Mike, about not doing it is, okay, worst case scenario, drought continues and water is much, in much shorter supply in 2028. They are going to enact some significant fees and fines for this.
Yeah, but if we're not, okay, so.
Because I suspect this is being driven by urban areas where they don't use outdoor water.
So this isn't, this is an overlay set of restrictions potentially, separate from what our water rights are.
Correct.
Okay, so, so we as a city, if we're not, you know, collectively exceeding the right to water that we have, the state will still be able to penalize us potentially in 2028 for having exceeded a budget that they created based on aerial photos.
Under these two pieces of legislation, yes.
It's right up there with the fact that we couldn't retain water that we were required to conserve 20% of our water and then we couldn't use it here.
Okay, but giving you a six or a five-year head start is valuable?
It will be for us because it, one, it'll give us an idea of just what workload that truly means today and how that might project forward. But two, we don't come to 2028 and then try to have, well, then at that time have to figure out, okay, how do we address this? Hopefully this, and it's our goal and our intent is to use this on an annual basis so we can slowly start to chip away at the inefficiencies that exist in the system, whether it's residential or the other resolution, the non-residential sector. So that when 2028 comes, it's not, oh, we have to go and find, find, not find, 3,600, 4,000 homes to try to outreach and target. We can slowly chip away at that over the years. And by the time 2028 hits, this might not be an area in which we have to address because we'll have slowly educated, provided programming, whatever's needed to get us to a point where we don't have to worry about being, I don't want to say out of compliance, but not meeting our target.
Okay, two last questions. This is paid for from the enterprise fund for water?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, the contract is for three, three years? And are we doing a full catalog in one year or is it going to take three years to get there? Why is it three years, I guess?
We should be able to do this probably within a couple of months to get all the information together because of the company that we're working with. And then each month, you know, we have the ability then to update that information on a monthly basis for, you know, the next three years. So it just gives us more data points for one, but two, it gives us more opportunity to reach out to the customers that may be slowly or quickly getting out of a target that's been identified.
Okay, all right. It would be interesting to have a presentation, once you have the first year under your belt, on kind of where the, I'm sure you'll do that at the utility commission, but it would be interesting to see what the result of this analysis is.
You can definitely do that.
Thank you, I'll move the item.
A second.
We have motion and a second call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes.
Thanks.
And I, I pulled item eight. Lorraine, I know we, we talked about this a little bit during the gender review on Friday, but I just want to remind everyone that we're spending ARPA money to do a feasibility study for what I personally, from my construction background, expect will be a very expensive crossing of Folsom Boulevard because we're looking at crossing the railroad easement for traffic lanes and a suicide lane and then getting over, you know, connecting to existing trails. So if it's possible, as part of this feasibility study for Doc and to also look into, or at least work with our staff to look into potential ways to get grant funding to build it. Because, you know, it's great that we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a feasibility study, but if, you know, if this turns into a $2 million project that we're not going to have the money for, then I kind of feel like we've wasted that $200,000. So if there's a way to look into potential funding opportunities, whether it's state grants, federal grants, wherever that might come from, I think that would be important for them to include in the feasibility study.
Great, thank you, yeah, I know where, they will be doing that. And, and this actually, going through this feasibility study does make us more, uh, put us in better form to actually get grants. So I know this will be part of the SECOG, probably the next SECOG cycle, so, but we will definitely add that in.
Okay, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit it to just SECOG because there's, because of the fact that we're crossing, that we're going into the railroad right of way as well, there's also, there's separate pots of money at the federal level for rail-street rails. So make sure that somebody is looking at that. You know, there's a lot of other money, in my opinion, way beyond SECOG.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll move resolution 10945.
I'm sorry, can I ask one quick question? Where, where along Folsom Boulevard are we talking about?
Not really sure yet.
Is that why it's a feasibility study to find a place?
Well, actually there is, and, and thank you, Lorraine Pajoni, Parks and Market Director. The, the range of the area right now is between Blue Ravine and Glen. So somewhere between the RT lot and, and.
That makes sense.
And Blue Ravine. The idea is to try to connect over to the state trail connection right there off of Park Shore. So somewhere in between there.
Thank you.
But it's just given the height, I mean, you'd have to go at least 15 feet, you know, even at the edge of traffic and probably on the rail line as well. So those are some long approaches.
Yeah.
And declines in order to meet the ADA requirements.
Certainly.
So with that, I'll move the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion and a second call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes.
I pulled number 11 because I have a couple of questions and comments. One of them is on the business improvement district. In 2003, it was 2% and 2012, it was 4%. Is there an industry standard today in 2022 for the BID? And you could save here, Joe, because I have a couple of other questions and comments.
There is not, it varies.
It varies. What, what's the range?
Some people do it per door, like a dollar per door, hotel room doors. Some people do it by percentage. Recently, Ranch of Cordova just raised theirs, I know that, but, so it's, everybody's kind of moving to a percentage. We started with a percentage and always been with a percentage.
Okay, and the other question I have is.
I think more importantly is what's the combined rate? So eight plus four is 12. So a lot of other communities are a lot higher than the combined rate of the two of ours from a competitive standpoint.
Okay, and then the other question I had was on the description of the activities. Do the, how do the hotels link an event to a hotel stay? Is there something that hap, is there some kind of a connection there?
So if there's a room block, we're aware of it, you know, so like if an event comes and they want to block a certain number of rooms, we're aware of it.
Okay.
And then sometimes we survey the hotels afterwards and say, but you know, with the booking engines that are out there now, a lot of people go through like Expedia or something. So for the California International Marathon, we don't know how, necessarily how many people are here for the marathon because they may have booked through a booking engine other than through the event.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
If it's through the event, we know.
Yeah. And then I just have a comment about some events that I think historically, when I talk to people, they really miss some and they, I think the events got too big and therefore at some point we just stopped. The first one is the Night of a Thousand Pumpkins. I know that that one got big in the historic district, but if it was spread out between the Pilatesio, the historic district and maybe the zoo, I think it, it was such an event that created so much fun for kids that I'm just, that's some of that feedback. Folsom Live and Tap Folsom are other ones that people ask, what happened to them? Are they going to come back? And so that's just my feedback. The other one is on the recent study mission in St. Louis. I can't remember the actual program, but they, they, they had the ability to be able to list all the events that are happening in, in St. Louis. And so it made it easy for people to say, oh, what's going on this weekend? And they were able to, to take a look at that. I think that's something that would be valuable because there are so often where people don't know that event was taking place and, and you get that, oh, I didn't know. And so I think when we look at tourism and visits and people coming into Folsom, if there was something like that for our, our city, I think it would be just beneficial in terms of attracting people to Folsom. And then the other comment I want to make.
Sally, Sally probably can answer. We do keep a calendar of events. I, I, I'm not the technology guy, but, you know, so people can post their own events, but she could probably address more about where that whole listing of events is.
Yeah, I think that's something that, just in general, I think it would be just beneficial. At the study mission in St. Louis was something that was like a big aha, we could really use some, you know, use something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Rodriguez, we are actually working on our website and switching to a new system. And along with that, we hope to get a widget which will help us bring in the events to the website because we, often we rely upon the events to enter their own information. And you bug them and you bug them and then we'll enter some, we don't get them all. But with a widget, it can help bring things in and then you say, yes, no, oh, that's in, oh Grove, not Sacramento, or whatever, and it's easier and it will be a more content-rich site. So we're hoping to have that and I think that's really important. And I think having that available, the appropriate ones on the city's website and how can we share, looking into technologies like that is really important. And it is absolutely the way of now, not the future. We need to be doing it.
It would be great. If I, if there was something that I could look at, I could say, oh, what's going on this weekend? And then, oh, I want to go to these events, that would be great. Okay, lastly, I was looking at the document that you provided and the strategic planning. And Joe, I just want to congratulate you and your team for being able to lay down something like this and have it be, you know, sort of tracked. I'm a very strong believer that you can't manage what you don't measure. And so you guys have just a really in-depth strategic plan that, you know, is putting my business owner hat on. I'm very grateful for something like that coming from the Choose Folsom business, so thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to share the, the results of the survey and the impact. I think there's some great opportunities for us, so thank you.
That's great. So with that, I will move resolution 10949.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. We will now convene the joint city council agenda, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting. Clark would call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Rodriguez. Here. Aquino.
Here.
Chalum Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Hal.
Here. To item 12.
Your one item on the joint meeting tonight is public hearing, item number 12. This is the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, City of Folsom, CFD number 20, Russell Ranch, special tax revenue bond, series 2022. Before you tonight, you have two resolutions, resolution number 10948 and resolution number. number 10948, and resolution number, on your agenda, 009, we want to correct that, is actually resolution numbers 010, of the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, CFO. Tonight, I'm presenting the Community Facilities District number 20, Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2022. For background information, the council approved CFD 20 on November 14th of 2017. This CFD provides for the construction and acquisition of certain public improvements to serve property within that CFD. These improvements include the backbone infrastructure, we have them listed here on the slide, and also subdivision improvements, also listed here. Here we have a map of the area. This is also known as Russell Ranch. In the center of the map, that area is already complete, and then Phase Two, the lower section, and Phase Three are currently under development. Staff is proposing to issue the Series 2022 Special Tax Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $15 million. Proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, fund a debt service reserve account, fund capitalized interest to September 1st of 2023, and pay certain costs of issuance. The recently appraised value of the property within CFD 20 is about $366 million. In compliance with the city's CFD policy, the value-to-lean ratio is 8.8 to 1. Our policy is that it be at least 3 to 1. Also in compliance with the city's policy is the projected tax burden. With this bond issuance, per parcel, it's 1.60 for single-family property, 1.65 for single-family high-density units, and 1.66% for multifamily low-density units. By taking these actions tonight, you're approving the form of the various required documents that are listed here on this slide, and you're also authorizing the officers of the city and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority to execute any and all documents, and take appropriate actions to prepare to issue the bonds. So with that, I do recommend approval of City Council Resolution number 10948, and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Resolution number 010, Folsom Ranch FA.
We will open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
I will move resolution 10948.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
I will move resolution number 010.
Yep, that's right. Just for clarity, in the agenda, it's number 009. Is that the correction that we have?
There was a correction.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. So we will adjourn the joint meeting, and reconvene the regular city council meeting, and move on to Old Business, item 13.
Yeah, your last item tonight is Old Business, item 13. This is a report back on underutilized and vacant city-owned properties and direction to staff.
Good evening again. Mayor Howell, members of the city council, Lorraine Pajoni, Parks and Market Director. So tonight, I'm going to give you a quick little overview of some work your staff has been doing, and also the two of the commissions. A little bit of background, city council created an ad hoc subcommittee in February with city council members Sarah Aquino and Vice Mayor Rosario Rodriguez. There was other community members selected as part of that committee to look at the underutilized and vacant parcels. You'll see the names there of our community members, many of which are here tonight. The city team, there was a city team assembled to look at 13 undeveloped and vacant sites in the city. These were the 13 sites that the city council ad hoc committee had identified. They had also, the ad hoc, and the ad hoc committee, the city council ad hoc committee, had looked at three other city-owned rented or leased sites. The ad hoc committee had done various site visits, reviewed relevant documents, parcel site maps, dug into the different site constraints, and looked at any prior agreements that may have been relevant for those sites. Just some quick map of where those 13 sites were identified as either underutilized or vacant, and starting with zero, down to 12, throughout the city there. The underutilized or vacant sites were three city-owned sites identified, the Einstein Cafe, the Zittle Family Amphitheater, Dan Russell Rodeo Arena. In August, the city council received a presentation by city council member Aquino and Vice Mayor Rodriguez. They had general recommendations and specific recommendations. The general recommendations were establish a real estate fund, consider retaining a commercial real estate professional, investigate surplus land act process, and reappoint committee, or expand the scope as needed. They had several recommendations for the 13 vacant sites, either sell, rezone, retain, activate, explore development opportunities, and then for the underutilized or vacant properties the city owns, refer the Einstein Cafe to Library Commission, and the Zittle and Rodeo Arena to the Parks and Market Commission. This is a quick overview of the matrix that that committee put together, which was very helpful. Identified four properties that they'd like us to look at for, to sell, two properties for rezoning, eight properties for retain and activate, and then five properties to explore the development opportunity. The city manager put together a team of city staff, consisting of the city attorney, and the directors from Public Works, Community Development, EWR, and myself from Parks and Rec. We reviewed all 13 sites, and looked at, for the sales, the sites that were suggested to be sold. This internal committee concurred with three of the four sites that believed that we, that they, they could be sold. We, we think that there should be a suggestion of two more sites that could be added, and we're also suggesting that Site 12 be removed. It is a site that is undevelopable with jurisdictional wetlands. All three, all five of those sites would be subject to the surplus land act. For the rezoned sites that were suggested, city staff also concurred with those sites, and recommend that this go through the pertinent commissions and city council approvals where necessary. For the retention and activate sites, the city team also concurred with all six sites, but each have specific circumstances that really need to be further evaluated. Some of them have trees on site, some of them have topographical issues, some are landlocked. For the explore and development sites, city team also concurred with those five sites, four which really should be looked at a little bit in further detail, and one site, Site 10, is already identified as a future high-density site. I do have aerials, if, if you need a refresher on any of those sites, in terms of what their constraints are, where they're at. In terms of the Library Commission review, on October 18th, the commission met and made recommendations for Einstein Cafe. There's a detailed description of that in your staff report, but from order of preference down, their suggestion was to offer the space to the Friends of the Library first, and that would be to utilize the space either for just a meeting space, have high-end vending machines, and make it available for the patrons of the library, or visitors to the library. Or secondarily, conduct an RFP process for the cafe, and see if there's any other organizations or businesses that may want to operate there. And lastly, make it a rental for community members, so add it to our suite of other facility rentals. The Parks and Market Commission looked at both the Zittle and the Rodeo Arena, at the, at
Lorraine, can I interrupt? I'd just like to get my colleagues to weigh in, so we can figure out if anybody feels strongly about what to do at the library site. And I'll start. This, what, we tried leasing it three times, and it never worked out. My personal feeling would be to make it available, or at least a good portion of it available for community rentals, because we do have a lot of people that are looking for, you know, small places to have, to host meetings, and if there would be a way to do that, as some sort of a combination of the Friends have some footprint in there, and then the rest of it's available for rent, I just think that's reasonable. Anybody else?
I agree. That's one of the things I was, as I was reading this, it was, I think it's been rented out so many times, and I think maybe the hours or something just doesn't allow
The cafe hasn't worked.
Yeah.
It's a bit of a challenge, in terms of the location, you know, just sort of being behind and hidden by the building itself, so.
Yeah, I, I think three strikes, and we're out on that one, so.
I agree.
How big is that site?
It's 800 square feet.
That's pretty big. Yeah.
Sarah?
Well, I'm prepared to accept the recommendation of the Library Commission, you know, to, I mean, the Friends of Folsom Library contribute significantly to the library, so to the extent that they can expand their footprint, hopefully increase their contribution to the library. And then they also talked about, I'm not exactly sure what this is, but a high-end vending machines
Yeah.
that could then generate some additional revenue. If that's what the Library Commission thinks is best, I'm okay with that.
Okay. I don't know the difference, so I'm just going to go with American.
So, just to get clarity then, so would it be to go with the recommendation from the Library Commission, and that's the preference?
Yeah.
At this point?
Yeah.
What exactly they are going to do, I'm so sorry, Mayor.
They're probably going to store books for the book sale, that's what they're going to do with it.
Yeah. So if we know a little bit more about it, I, I like it, you know, we have to respect what our commissioners are recommending to us, but sometimes we have to see, you know, what in a nutshell, exactly, that 800 square feet is pretty big.
The library director is here, too, if, Tom Grenison, if, and since he was there at that commission meeting, if, he might be able to expand on that. But the, this, the language that they provided to Tom was this, that the commission's vision would be, along with book sales, the space would offer seating area equipped with high-end vending machines. The city would receive revenue directly from the vending machines. So I think that's what they had in mind.
And vending machines generates good revenue, I mean, fairly good revenue.
Vending machines generate really good revenue, if you own the vending machines. I have friends that own vending machine companies. It's very profitable for the people that own the machines. It's not profitable for the places where they're sitting.
What I think that they envisioned, thank you, Tom, for being here, they were envisioning that the proceeds from the vending machines would help feed the Friends of the Folsom Library Fund, right?
That's, that's great, but I don't think that's how vending machines work. And I'm happy to put you in touch with my friend, Becky, who owns about 1,000 of them.
Sure, excellent. Yes, I think in the view of the commission, this was going to be the best of both worlds, where the city raises revenue through the operation of the vending machines. At the same point, we help the Friends, who in turn help the city. I think that we would need to have a discussion with the Friends Board that's wide open, to see if they have the capacity to operate that vision.
Again, I, I'm strongly recommending that you let me get you in touch with my friend, Becky, who, who does this for a business, because I don't think that's how it works.
That would be appreciated, Mayor.
Okay. It'd be great if there were revenue, but I don't think there would be.
We'd like revenue.
Yeah, that's, frankly, that's why I was looking at me giving some space to the Friends, so they can store the books for the book sale, and making it a, you know, a reasonable rental for small gatherings of people. Because we, we get a lot of people, I mean, there's restaurants that get calls, you know, can we, do you have a private room? And right now, the only places where you can really do that is if you rent the, you know, the rodeo clubhouse during the day, when somebody else isn't using it, or, you know, the little small meeting room at the community center. And there's, there's not a lot of, of other options in town. And there's a lot of groups that would like to get together, whether it's a Boy Scout meeting, or whatever.
But are we generally in agreement that we can just turn this over to the library director and the library commission?
Yes.
And say, handle it?
But give me a call tomorrow, and I'll get you in touch with Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor.
So handle it means they're going to make the final decision, whether it is going to be given to the Friends of Library, or it is going to be, I know, second one is, anyway, it's, it's not working for us, right? So is that the director's decision this council is authorizing?
No, I'm suggesting that the library director, because the Friends of the Library think that they can bring in high-end vending machines and make money, I don't think that's, that's possible. So I'm going to get the information, so that he can check into it, go back to the Friends of the Library, and say, high-end vending machines is not an option. So now what do you want to do?
I don't think the Friends of the Library proposed that idea. The Library Commission proposed that idea.
Okay, well, wherever it came from, I, you know, I think we need to clarify it.
Are, are we, but I think, if I may paraphrase your question, Mr. Chalum Cherla, are we giving the discretion to the Library Commission and the library director to do what they can to generate some revenue and make that space useful? Or are we asking them to study it and come back to us with a more detailed description of how they plan to use it? And I'm willing to give them the discretion to solve it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to do some combination of one and three, but two, I think we agree that two's off the table, because we've already been down that road three times, and it didn't work.
I'm with Councilmember Kozlowski in saying, let the library director and the library commission handle this, with the understanding that our goal is to activate the space and to generate revenue if possible.
Sounds good.
Are you in agreement, Sarah, that two's kind of off the table?
No, I'm letting them. I would prefer to just let them do it.
Okay.
Consensus on that?
Yes.
Turn it over to library director and commission to figure it out.
For
Activate the space.
In your good hands.
Activate the space, generate some revenue.
Will do, thank you.
Go forth.
Thank you.
Prosper.
Prosper.
All right. All right, so Parks and Rec Commission. So, an ad hoc committee of the Parks and Rec Commission was formed to tackle this issue. They met four times with staff, and a few times with FHDA, and the Historic Folsom Resident Association. The Parks and Rec Commission approved the ad hoc committee's recommendation, and here's, it's detailed out in your staff report, but they made seven specific recommendations that maintain, that basically maintain the current focus for fund-free and family-related events at the Zittle Amphitheater, and then the other existing events and uses of both sites. So the rodeo, the Renaissance Fair, the various other, other daily or monthly rentals we get at the rodeo. So they'd like to see those, those maintained, with the emphasis to recover staff costs where possible, any kind of damage costs that, that sometimes occur with rentals. They had additional, they had 10 additional ideas of moving forward, they called it, focusing on engaging partners, seeking a promoter input, and evaluating improvements needed to enhance the usage of both, of both of those event venues. So backing up, and we've already, well, this, these are the recommendations and direction to staff that we're seeking tonight. So the recommendation one, so for the vacant city-owned parcels, we are recommending that we remove Site 12. And again, this is the site that is, a site that is along Glen, it's actually divided by the roadway. The northern section is, has jurisdictional wetlands on it. The southern section is the site of a future park called the Sun Country Park, but it also has part of our trail in there as well. So we're recommending Site number 12 be eliminated, but all the other ones have various merits that require some additional evaluation to get a better idea of which ones are best suited to either sell, rezone, retain and activate, and explore or develop. So that's our recommendation one. Recommendation two, we just addressed with Einstein Cafe, so we have clarity there. And then lastly, for the Zittle Family Amphitheater and the Dan Russell Rodeo Arena, this captures the top seven recommendations that the Parks and Rec Commission made, and if it's, pertains to one, one venue versus the other, we put that in parentheses. And then the follow-up with the additional considerations is listed in the previous slide, and it's outlined in your staff report. So there's various thoughtful additional considerations, which wanted to bring to your attention. Review and discuss, increase activation with FHDA and Choose Folsom. Review and discuss, increase activation with Choose Folsom and others, one for the, for Zittle, one for the arena. Review and discuss new improvements needed to modify each venue. Some, the Russell, Dan Russell Rodeo Arena needs more improvements than the Zittle. Consider laddering improvements, so just kind of feathering them in over time, just to, to see which, which, which toggle works the best to get new opportunities created there. Consider, consideration should be given to neighborhood impacts. Connect with potential promoters. Determine, with the help of promoters, factors that make the amphitheater less desirable or more desirable. Same factor for the rodeo arena. Consider public-private partnerships. Gain an understanding of what is necessary to drive additional use and programming, and ensure costs incurred by the city are covered. So those are those additional considerations moving forward. We also have two of the, two of our Parks and Rec Commissioners who are also on the original committee, that were assigned to the Parks and Rec Ad hoc Committee. Both Will Kempton and Brian Wallace are here, too. It sounds like they may want to make some additional comments. But that is the recommendations before you tonight. Number one and three are the ones we would need direction on.
Is there some sort of time scale? Is there some sort of, uh, time scale to the additional investigation that we're talking about for the Zittill and the, uh, Dan Russell?
There was not a time scale outlined in the discussions, um, but it sounded more eminent and more, you know, try to keep it pretty, pretty current, so.
I, I think, generally speaking, the, the staff recommendation is fine, but I would need some more specificity on that part, because we've talked on a number of occasions about the use of the rodeo arena particularly, and none of these recommendations is all that earth-shattering, we've talked about them before in one form or fashion, um, and the time is now to actually take some action to determine how we're gonna implement any of that, that we just discussed. Otherwise, we ju, you just made a recommendation for status quo, which was not the objective here.
The additional considerations are probably where that would move the dial a little bit.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I'm looking at, you know, when you emphasize on the public-private partnership, just to bring it, you know, arena and amphitheater, they have a lot of potential.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Mr. Kempton is here. Mr. Kempton, you want to add something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, Will Kempton, a member of the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission, and I was also, uh, the head of the Subcommittee, which, uh, sort of considered this, uh, assignment of responsibility from the council to the Commission, and then we brought it back to the Commission at our meeting last week. And I just wanted to make a clarification, because to your point, Councilmember Kozlowski, the way the report is written, it, it implies that, that the recommendations are essentially the status quo items. We wanted to, we did want to clarify those, and there's some of them that are very important in terms of recovering staff costs associated with, uh, supporting, uh, events, and some of the other, uh, recommendations that are listed there. But the, uh, on this, in the staff report, on page five, there is, uh, a list of the specific recommend, additional recommendations, we didn't consider them considerations, we didn't consider them ideas, we considered those as recommendations, just as the recommendations that are listed here. So we don't have a timeline associated with them, but I think it was the consensus of the Subcommittee and ultimately the Commission, that we would want to move forward with, uh, the, the type of analysis that we've suggested in those additional recommendations, uh, so that we can, uh, start to look at other options. Public-private partnership, uh, the ability to, uh, what, what do we need to, uh, do to increase the marketability of those venues?
Yeah.
How, how, how can we, uh, what, what improvements need to be made in order to, for example, at the amphitheater, to make it a usable venue for, uh, events that you would charge for?
Yeah.
So those were recommendations that we made, that we think we need to move forward with very quickly, uh, consistent with the recommendations that have been listed on the slide.
I, I agree with your recommendations wholeheartedly, I just would like to have a sense of what you think a practical time period is to start, you know, chipping those off the list.
We, we didn't specifically discuss that, so I could only give you.
I'm asking for a wag from you.
Yeah, I, I think those, those, uh, issues could be addressed within a six-month timeframe.
Okay.
And I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind, there's, there's a little bit of conflict here, because we're talking about, um, we're talking about public-private partnerships, but this recommendation states for individual events.
Mm-hmm.
We don't wanna bring in somebody that's gonna tell us what we can and cannot do at the amphitheater, and we're specifically talking about the amphitheater more so than the rodeo arena. But, um, the first bullet item for consideration by the Parks and Rec Commission was maintain branding, focus of fun, free, and family at the amphitheater, so we, you can't have it both ways. So.
Well, there is, um, uh, uh, right now, the events that are, that are held there, that's kind of the motto that encompasses the, those activities. So we're, if it, if we're trying, if, if it looks like we're trying to say free and no charging, that wasn't the intent, uh, but, uh, the Folsom Historic District Association has operated the, uh, events that they put on there, essentially focusing on fun, free, and, uh, family-oriented events.
Every now and then, there's been an event down there where fencing was brought in, and I think that's, that's a great thing.
Mm-hmm.
So for the stuff that is being operated by the Historic District Association, or business, whatever they call themselves now, um, I think that somehow there needs to be some cost built into that, because those events that take place on Tutter Street benefit the Historic District predominantly, and not the entire city of Folsom necessarily, yet the residents of the entire city of Folsom are, are paying for those.
Yeah, and that gets back to the, uh, recover costs associated.
Yeah, and I'm talking about the staff time, the staff time recovery and the damage. My understanding is that there was some damage, uh, that, that has been caused over the last few years by the ice rink, and I'm frankly not surprised by that, but, so somehow that cost needs to be recovered, I mean, we, we just, that facility's not that old to have had that much damage already to the concrete, so.
Anyway, I just wanted to make that clarification, these are, this is a complete set of recommendations that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, my only thing was just, let's get to work on finding ways to do those recommendations.
I don't think you'd find any argument from the Commission.
Is there, is, is it possible, instead of, instead of a hundred and eighty days, yeah, maybe, you know, ninety days?
Well, if you wanted to engage a, a promoter, as an example, you'd have to go through some sort of a process to do that, and to get that information, so I, I would think.
You might, you might find that, like, um, Sonny or Mary Carrera, some of the local folks that have been known, that do events in Folsom, might certainly, might be more than happy to sit down and talk with you.
We.
But with regard to your timeframe, we're coming into Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and that's gonna, that's gonna make it very difficult for them to do that in ninety days.
And with respect to your, uh, suggestion, Madam Mayor, uh, we had, uh, in, on the original committee that Councilmember Aquino put together, we did actually have, uh, a, a promoter.
Mm-hmm.
And he did provide a lot of good information.
Oh, good.
And so it might be possible that that could be done without, uh, you know, going through a contract process, um, but we wanted to make sure that it got done.
No, and I, I would think that, that, you know, the two others that I mentioned would be happy to sit down and meet with you guys for a couple of hours, because those are the people, the local people that are, would be most interested in getting a contract to have events, so I don't think they'd charge you to give you advice about it.
And while I don't think it's stated in, in the recommendations specifically, we did also see the benefit of continuing collaboration with the Folsom Historic District Association, with Choose Folsom and others that have been involved in, uh, programming activities at these venues.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Did we have somebody else to speak on that in particular, before we go to the unused ice properties?
Yes.
So I think, I'm good with the three, um, the way we discussed.
I do have a request to speak from Jim Snuck.
Thank you, Mayor Howell, council members, appreciate the time to speak. Uh, I'm here representing the Folsom Historic District Association, and the current president. We did have discussions about the amphitheater, going back, you know, when it was all created, the, the plaza with the thought of an amphitheater, our thought was having smaller events more often. We, we try as an association to have events that don't impact the, the peak hours, like a Friday or Saturday night, like, we do the Thursday concert series, uh, we just had festival, uh, for Halloween, and it was super successful, the district was packed, and it brings a lot of tax revenue by all the extra business. The concern that I would have, if we just take a myopic view and say, hey, how can we get a promoter and just activate this as much as possible to make as much money as possible?
I don't, I don't think anybody said that, Jim.
So I'm just, but, the talk about an outside promoter, so that, that kinda makes.
Just for individual events?
So if there was events like a Friday, Saturday night, that's packing it in, to come to the event, it could help, it could detrimentally affect the businesses and the tax revenue that they bring. So my concern would be that FHJ is intimately involved with this discussion going forward, and helping to come up with the plan, 'cause I understand there are costs associated with events, we do a lot of free events, and we fund them through sponsorships and things like that. We don't do, uh, ticketed events, per se, uh, we did for the symphony, that was more sponsorship, uh, and ticketed, so, um, my big concern would be, like, mainly the Fridays and Saturday nights, if we turn it over, those would be the nights a promoter would wanna bring in events, and, and I think it would be very detrimental to the, the businesses, so.
And can you imagine the number of residents that would be sitting at every council meeting?
Well, anyways, uh, but we, we would like the opportunity to be part of this process as an association, so that's it, thank you.
Well, for what it's worth, I would suggest that the, of the, of the recommendations that were made separate from the bulleted points here, um, the finding a better balance of, um, managing the use of the arena, or the Dan Russell Arena, is, has been a priority of mine for years, and I would really like to see us, um, find a promoter, find, find other uses, find ways to activate that space, um, post haste, so that, that is a priority as far as I'm concerned. The Zittill Amphitheater obviously has been very well populated by events already in the last year or so, um, last two years, and I think that's largely due to activities that, you know, FHDA has brought forward and others, um, so the collaboration needs to be maintained on programming the Zittill Amphitheater, certainly. So I would say that, you know, while, I think the cases are slightly different between the two, um, but either way, um, the using, you know, fun, free, and family makes perfect sense, um, but there, I, I, I never have thought that we had to be free a hundred percent exclusively at the Zittill Amphitheater, there can be a mix of events that maybe have paid, have some paid seating, or, you know, other types of ways of generating some revenue, either for the FHDA, or the city, or the promoter. So, um, we, we really need to look very closely at trying to make those things thoughtfully active, so that they promote the district, um, without making it too much of a tourist attraction, um, and that's so that we get, um, some better, much better use out of the Dan Russell Arena, so, there you go.
The only, the only caution I'm gonna give you on, on the rodeo arena, and this is just because Lorraine and I talked about it on Friday morning, um, the other thing that we have to give consideration to, there's a lot of, um, sports activities that take place down there.
Yeah, we can't use, we can't, we can't use little kids soccer as a reason to never use the Dan Russell Arena.
I'm not saying that, I'm just telling you that, that was Lorraine's comment to me when we talked about it, we'd have to look and see what, what games, softball games, whatever else they're using that space for down there.
Yeah.
Because it takes up the parking lot.
That was a similar conversation that we had had also, it was, to me, was the, um, the arena could really use some activation, um, just more activities that take place there, I think.
Oh, I, I don't disagree.
I think if there were any, if there was any place to have, uh, paid activities, um, the arena is probably one of the, the best ways. And just a comment on FHDA, I would, I definitely would, um, agree that having them a part of the, um, conversation that to do with the Zittill would be critical, because when you look at, um, the impact to businesses and you, events, and you, you, you know, I think having them right in the middle is really important.
Yeah, their participation is crucial. But yeah, I, I, I hear you, um, but we can't be paralyzed by, I, I love soccer. I love it in my heart of hearts, but we cannot be paralyzed by, by youth soccer.
I agree.
When we have a huge asset that could be used more thoughtfully.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
I think it would be also helpful to thoughtfully engage the neighbors that are tucked around the backside of that arena, you know, for, as we move forward as well.
No question.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like the way number two, number three is also in good hands. Mr. Kempton and the Fox team, you guys are going to collaborate and come back with some proposals. You know, if we see the numbers, it helps us, okay? The amphitheater was full out of three hundred and sixty-five days, or fifty-two weeks, this many times, so that's what probably you guys are going to take into consideration and explore, that's all. And I agree that HDC, the business group, should be part of it, as well as, uh, Choose Folsom, or Visit Folsom. Thank you.
So, Lorraine, can you go back to the, the previous slide, I think, where it shows recommendation one, because I, I do wanna start moving on some of these properties. So Pam, this might be a question for you, the property zero is the, kind of the remnant at the end of Fong Street, I understand that we have to go through the surplus act, um, process, I don't see anybody wanting to purchase that, no affordable housing developer is gonna want that, it's not gonna drain a whole bu, lot of money, but unless you see some reason for the city of Folsom to hang on to that, I think we ought to say, start the process to sell that. Do you have any reason that we need to keep that?
No, I just need to remember, there was one of the properties that wasn't a separate parcel, and we may need to.
That is that, that's that one.
Yeah, I think so, we just have to go through the mapping process, but we can definitely start that.
So I, I would like to propose that we put that in motion and get going on that, and again, when we sell these things, like, that's not gonna generate a lot of money, but the idea is maybe to create some kind of a real estate fund where we can then be strategic about, um, things, that would be the.
On that, just one more comment, I think, um, if the city attorney is in agreement, I think we would have to come back to you with a resolution, um, that you would, of, that you would formally direct us to dispose the property.
And, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't, um, in order to sell any of them, if they're city-owned properties, they're gonna have to be declared surplus.
That's, that's where we.
In which case, and they will be subject to the affordable housing, you're probably gonna be right, where some of these parcels are too small and useless for affordable housing, but that's what's, they're all gonna be subject to it.
Right.
We have to go through the process, and yes, we do need to come back to you, and we will.
So yeah, sorry for the extra step of a resolution.
Okay.
Did we consider the suggestion that was made at one point to do, um, land leases on some of these things? Or of it, make them available to lease, rather than dispose of them?
Possibly, but, yeah, I, I don't, yes, I think we did talk about that, but not for that specific property, that's just a little remnant.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I would say if we could put, uh, property zero, number zero into motion, um, the next one that I, I would like to see some activity on was property number three, which is, um, nine oh six Leeds Dorf, so this is, uh, basically in between, uh, Lake Natoma Crossing and, um, Karen's Bakery, and we know that the parcel next to ours is also privately owned, but we had talked about starting to initiate conversations with that adjacent property owner, um, not saying that we're gonna sell ours, or we're gonna buy theirs at this point, I, I would just like to know, do they have a vision, do they have a long-term plan for their property, are they ever gonna sell it, are they ever gonna develop it, do they know, maybe they don't know, but if we could, um, maybe just have some staff members and, and, um, whoever's gonna represent, the, the first council district ought to be, uh, part of that, and just start initiate some conversations there.
If there's consensus from the council on that?
Sounds good.
I have a question on, I, I'll wait for the end, maybe.
Okay.
That's better, I do have some comments on that one, before we sell it, I think I did make this comment even last time also, on August twenty-third, when we were presenting, but I'll hold back my.
No, we're talking about it, just, just say whatever.
Yeah, go ahead, because I, I'm, I'm not saying to sell it yet, we don't know, but.
Yeah, I hear you, no, continue, you are a name.
But also, I mean, I think we're all in agreement that those two parcels together should be activated, right?
Yeah.
And if at some point they're going to be sold, well, probably selling ours before the other one's sold would help us with the surplus land act process, right? Because who's gonna want, want ours without the other one? Nobody, so that could work to our favor.
We could, we can, as staff, engage the property owner and, and start those conversations.
I think number eleven, the Park Shore Drive, I think this is the one adjacent to Wappa that we had talked about, um, I, I know Will has big plans for, for that, but, um, uh, you know, does Wappa have any interest in, in purchasing that? Again, just initiating some conversations, and I know twelve was coming off the list, but then, Lorraine, I think you said there was one other that you guys were recommending possibly selling, and I don't remember which one that was, do you?
Yeah, let's see, oh, actually, it's in the appendix.
Oh, we know RT, that's the one you were talking about, possibly.
The selling was the, behind Diamond Glen, those little strips between the railroad, uh, the railroad and Diamond Glen.
I can't imagine that anyone's gonna have any interest in buying those, you can't get to them. It's behind a gated community and immediately adjacent to the railroad, you mean?
From Glen, so there's a little strip that connects you to up to Glen, to the next strip that's behind Folsom, uh, Diamond Glen. It, it's not decent access at, by any. It, it's not decent access by any means, but...
Okay.
I think the conversation was reach out to Kikeman next door, reach out to Diamond Glen next door, see if either have any interest of that. That's, those are the two adjacent property.
Yeah, again, I'm ready to start moving, so I don't think there's any harm in initiating conversations.
That, those were actually sites seven and eight, the ones behind Diamond Glen. The number 11 was, yeah, you're right. Okay, so Park Shore was Wappa and seven, eight were the Diamond Glen.
Yep.
Okay.
I have no problem with moving forward with all of them because we got to get some processes we got to go through.
Yeah.
You know, and there's no point in necessarily talking to Kikeman or, I honestly don't believe, I would be shocked if Diamond Glen Homeowners Association had any interest in, in that property. But, you know, we know that we get a bunch of steps to go through to, to get through the whole surplus land act, make it available to, to affordable housing builders and then have no affordable housing builders express any interest. Then we can go to, then we can go to somebody like Kikeman.
Right. Yep. So that's what I'm seeing right now.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I agree.
On number five, Lorraine, the 200 Mormon, after rezoning, what will happen for that?
The recommendation was to make it just part of the park.
200 Mormon, I think, was the one that, you look at, looks like Costa Rica, right? I mean, there's, there's nothing that's ever going to happen there.
Yeah.
We were thinking a zip line would be fantastic.
So both four and five are behind Rodeo Park. Mormon is, you can access it, access it off of Mill Street.
Yeah.
But it's completely wooded, like, yeah, like council member Aquino said, it's just...
On the retain our activities, it's going to be green then for number five?
It's like a canyon.
It's a canyon, right. A friend of mine used to live over there.
Activities?
Yeah.
Zip lines.
Yeah. If it is, I'm fine.
I don't, yeah. There really wouldn't be any activation, the potential for activation because it's landlocked is pretty, pretty hard on number four. Mormon is the one that has the access off of Mill Street.
Right. I think four was the one that we were talking about. At some point, you could have some kind of bike, bike trail connection to the, you know, Sutter Street. It would have to have a little bridge or something like that, but, yeah. But I would say right now the priorities are sell, get, let's get going on the process to sell number zero, the parcel at the end of Fong Street. Initiate conversations about number three, 906 Leeds Dorf. Initiate conversations about seven and eight behind Diamond Glen. And number 11, initiate conversations and see if there's a buyer for it. Sound good?
Consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, that's very helpful.
I have a comment to make before, and I want to respect, you know, Sarah and Rosario when they did, you know, a lot of efforts, you know, in, in collaboration with that big group. I sincerely want to respect that and thank them. The one comment I made last time is before we sell it, you know, I just want to make this point. Last week I was with the walk with the heart, the little dog and walking around. So they're trying to raise the funds to build tiny homes. Homelessness is not going anywhere in any town. So we got to take a look at it seriously. I don't know whether the infrastructure or the other things, whether it is going to be or not. Thinking one more time, maybe 10 years from now, that little land, probably a group of tiny homes which are far away from our communities. No one wants, you know, in their backyard. So I really, really want, you know, this council and our city administration, take a look at it seriously. Again, I'm looking for long-term. There is, you know, another 9,000 homes are coming on that side. This city is growing and we have to keep in mind that how do we support besides Oak Hill Church giving a piece of land for six tiny homes? How do we extend the helping hand? I know Governor is thinking about it, you know, give me a, a more actionable plan. He's asking cities, even though he retrieved his wants. So think about that before sell it. That's the comment I made last time?
Are you talking about just in general or a specific property?
In general, in general, because that's what my request is, you know, if anyone, think one more time. That's all I'm making a comment. And we have to step into that helping side, at least on the land. Right now, the Oak Hill Church is the one coming forward and giving them the land and the nonprofit organization is raising, even though we are collaborating with nonprofits in this town. So just want to repeat the same comment I made almost three months ago. Thank you. But again, thank you and thank you. It's a lot of work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you to the city staff for bringing this back and thank you to the members of our committee who are here today. And I would like to bring back in the future, as we had talked about, a resolution to reestablish the ad hoc committee. Now you have to, you know, you can only have one for a year and then you have to reestablish it. So, and then we had talked about expanding the scope a little bit so that the committee could start identifying some privately owned parcels in the city that perhaps would be key for development, you know, that are underutilized and that could possibly, if developed thoughtfully, could result in some additional property tax revenue for the city. So we'll ask to have that come back in the near future.
Lorraine, I have a quick question. I'm going to go back to the Zittill Amphitheater. Currently, right now, if I want to rent it, I have, I either go through the city of Folsom or the Historic District Association, correct?
The city of Folsom.
City of Folsom.
We manage it.
So, okay, okay. So in the event that somebody promoted it, then it would go through the city of Folsom?
There's probably different arrangements we could have.
I mean, potentially.
Yeah, but if, if it's, if, if we were to reach out to promoters for single daily events, we, we would be in charge of that. That way we can manage the entire calendar. We know what's going on with FHDA. We know, we, we have a good sense of what's going on there. Yeah, so that would make sense. I don't, I didn't hear that it was a, you know, bring on a promoter and just give away the keys. It was more just seeing if there's some windows of opportunity to, to have, you know, fee-based events come in.
Yeah, okay, good. That was my question. Thank you.
Anything else for Lorraine?
Thank you.
Okay. In which case we move to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. The Folsom Holiday Lights Contest is back. Enter your home, neighborhood or business in the Folsom Holiday Lights Contest. Categories include Holly Jolly Residence, Clark Griswold, Hollywood Christmas, Marion Bright Business and Illuminate the Block. You can register by December 12th at folsom.ca.us/holidaylightscontest. Ice skating in Historic Folsom is a cherished winter tradition. The ice rink will be open, is open November 11th through January 16th. This year's rink moved to 825 Leadestorf Street adjacent to the Historic District Plaza. Folsom has two great options for tree lighting events. Plaudio's Tree Lighting takes place at 5:00 PM on Saturday, November 19th and the Historic District Tree Lighting Event is at 6:00 PM on Friday, December 2nd. Applications for commission and committee positions will be accepted by November 14th, through November 14th, so please see our website for more information. The Urban Land Institute Expert Panel will be here next week to discuss recommendations for the development of the city's central business district. The panel will be interviewing local leaders, city staff, interest groups, property owners and developers. And finally, the most important announcement I have tonight is that Officer Mitch Bates is retiring from the Folsom Police Department. His last day is this Thursday and so tonight is his last city council meeting serving us. And I just wanted to personally thank Officer Bates for your amazing career here and your service to us in so many ways. So thank you and best wishes.
Rosario.
Well, several things that I had on my list, Elaine just covered, but if, to all the veterans, I just want to thank you for your service to our great country. I truly admire individuals that have served. And also about the Veterans Day Parade, I'm excited about that. And yeah, the ice skating rink, it looks fantastic. It's such a great location. I think it's going to be a very interesting and fun year for them. The women's conference is next Thursday, the 17th and hosted by the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and the lineup sounds fantastic. And the tree lighting. And then there were a couple of studies recently that came out. And one of them is that Sacramento is the second city in California with the worst drivers, ahead of San Francisco that came in fifth and LA that came in fourth. And I was like, let that sink in. Sacramento area is, yeah, it's out of control.
Just so you know, last year it was Rancho Cordova was number one.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, yeah. So, and then what else? And then also the Sacramento area has really moved up in the food industry, so we're becoming a foodie area. And with that said, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and see you guys next, in December.
Okay.
Wow. That's right. It's in December, the next eve, and happy Thanksgiving. Good. Folsom Plan area hosted, you know, the business open house. That's very informative, even though we heard from the hospitals and all those, but they, they presented, you know, at a high level what's going on, when the mama and papa shops are coming in the town center, all those things. It's very informative, even though I didn't stay for the bus ride, that's, that seems to be a fun one that day. The second one is, I know, HAD did the, a walk with the dog. You can bring your dog and it, it was a lot of volunteering work going on with the, the homeless assistance resource team. I'm going to be very curious how the results are coming out. I have been very active with that group for the last five years, you know? We got to Rao, that, that's what, you know, Mr. Kazlowski was asking, you know? You want to see some numbers or, you know, things, not the generic ones. It has been, we have been working on very hard on that, over 100 volunteers works for the winter shelter, which is a good thing, giving a nice. Right now they're opening up for the sign up. If anybody interested, Folsom, please give them a helping hand as well. Well, last but not least, you know, the big Veterans Day is coming. My salute to, you know, all veterans, you know, in Folsom. And here is our city attorney to start with. Thank you, sir, for your service and for everyone, thank you for your service and happy Veterans Day. Officer Bates, you know, once again, thank you so much for your service, you know? We'll be seeing you around. Thank you again and good night.
Mike?
Just a couple of things. I want to thank the promoters of the Rio Del Lago 100 Mile Race for inviting me out to the starting line. It starts at 5:00 AM. And it was the smallest sacrifice for me to make to be there at that starting line because everybody else at that starting line was planning to run for somewhere between 16 and 30 continuous hours. And one of those people is somebody who has spoken before us on homelessness issues many times and that's Jason Davis. He was, for the second year in a row, a finisher under 24 hours. So had it been Western states, he would have got a belt buckle and he's trying to run Western states at some point. So congratulations to everybody that visited Folsom and ran that race and especially to Jason. Very excited about the ice rink opening up and it not being a donut. I'm actually really excited that it's a rectangle so that you can kind of test your moves out a little bit more fully. And then I want to thank the, the folks at the Twin Lakes Food Bank and congratulate them. Thank them for inviting me to their gala this year and congratulations to them for it being a massive success and a huge, huge amount of money was raised that evening. So it was, it was great fun and good times and I inadvertently paid a lot of money for a pickleball like day at the...
Yeah, but you didn't pay a thousand dollars for a glass of water.
I did not do that, but could have, could have. And then the, the last thing is that for all of you high school age athletes that are out there watching this meeting right now, and I know there are thousands of you, it is the time to start thinking about spring sports, particularly track and field. It's the perfect complement for any other sport that you might do. And Vista Del Lago will start practicing off-season on Thanksgiving morning to work up an appetite for some turkey. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Very excited about the parade and see you all in December.
Awesome. Sarah?
Officer Bates, thank you very much for your service. If you, if you start to miss it and you get the itch and you want to do a little bit of patrolling, come join me and Lynn LaPage on Friday afternoons at 2:00 in front of the Walmart Shopping Center and we'll, we could use your help. I just want to report back on that very quickly. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, I contacted the owner of the shopping center and thanks to Pete Picardo for clarifying this for me, there's actually two owners of that, that shopping center. Walmart owns their property straight out to Riley Street and then this Bay Area company, I wanted to Nazareth Holdings or something like that owns the rest of it where the 99 cent store is and 24 Hour Fitness and all that kind of stuff. So it's Nazareth Holdings that I have been in contact with. I emailed them, I think it was a couple of Fridays ago. Right away, I heard back from the property management company, which is here in the Sacramento Folsom area, and also from a gentleman who is in charge of construction for that company. They're actually planning a significant remodel of that shopping center and the words that he used, he said, "It's not just lipstick on a pig. I'm talking about a real facelift." Pam, I was texting with him today. He wasn't able to come last Friday, but I'm going to put him in touch with you. And did, we did have a representative from the property manager that, there, and we just kind of talked about just kind of the general state of it. It's not looking too good. There's a lot of trash. There's a lot of cigarette butts and planters where there should be flowers, that sort of thing. But also asked, they do have security on call, but we said, you know, if they could have security here, 2:00 to 4:00 PM every Friday, just as a deterrent, it would really go a long way. But still having, had a lot of city staff join me last Friday. Also, council member Kazlowski had a lot of good conversations with kids. And as I said before, we completely understand their, their desire to socialize and burn off energy and stuff. I also had a conversation last Friday afternoon with Folsom Cordova Board President David Reed. And I said, you know, there's a very simple, obvious answer here and that is let the kids hang out on campus when school gets out. So many of them said that they would like to play basketball, but the, the school district wants them off campus. And so he agreed and he's going to try to work on that from his end. A couple of years ago, the school board did approve a resolution that said that their outdoor facilities, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, all that kind of stuff needs to be open after school and on weekends because those belong to the taxpayers. We paid for those facilities. Those parents paid for those facilities. And so this kind of goes along with that same concept.
I had no idea they weren't allowed over there after school.
They, they are supposed to get off campus after school and it would be so much nicer if they could just play basketball in the gym or use the outdoor courts or something like that.
You know, maybe inside the gym is a little bit different, but outside facilities, that is positively ridiculous.
So anyway, it's, it's taking a village, but we're getting there and Lynn is out there with me every, every Friday. So thank you very much. We get this Friday off, Lynn, because we'll be at the parade and there's no school, so they're their parents' responsibility. So have a good night. Thanks.
So just want to remind everybody, now that we're back to, it's getting dark early, please pay attention. I know I was having a hard time seeing some people just coming from my house to this meeting tonight because they're wearing dark clothes and walking with a stroller and crossing a street. People are still driving way too fast and I, almost every light I stop at, at least two cars go through the light. And I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, just to save me the inconvenience of having